Thank you, President, members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I would like to take this opportunity to say that I too have had a great working relationship with the Learn Charter School, and they are coming to partner with us here in the Waukegan Public Schools. This part of the agenda tonight calls for the public response to the charter application that was submitted to the District Administration and to the Board of Education. And at this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Mary Lamping, our Deputy Superintendent of Schools, to whom I gave the charge to carry out this review process, the opportunity to approach the podium and to introduce our panel of respondents to the application as well as to the questions which were posed by both the Administration as well as the Board of Education at its recently held meeting back in December. Dr. Lamping.
Thank you, Dr. Batiste, and members of the Board, President Hannah. Over the course, I'm waiting for the projection comment. Can you tap on the computer? We have a very short presentation for you today. We have about nine slides that we're going to do for you today that talk a little bit about the process and then go through the analysis that the school district administration conducted. So we can go to the first slide. And hit it again. The Learn Charter School Network submitted their application to establish an elementary school within our boundaries of the district. The application, I believe, is actually dated November 14th, or were you saying that on November 17th? A public carrier was held on December 10th, at which the Learn Charter School Network presented their application and answered questions. We also were able to have a joint dialogue before that December 10th meeting, of which the district submitted a number of questions to Mr. White. And he and his staff went and researched those and responded back to them, which we were very pleased with and very thankful for, because I think it made the process even more enlightening. And then an analysis of the application was conducted by District Administration between December 11th and December 31st. There's a statutory framework for analyzing charter schools. The law has about 15 components. However, there are three global parameters for the Board to look at to give preference to proposals. One is that the proposal demonstrates a high level of local pupil parental community business and school personnel support. The second is that the proposal sets rigorous levels of expected pupil achievement and demonstrates feasible plans for attaining those levels of achievement. And finally, that the plan is designed to enroll and serve a substantial portion of our students' children. That's the overarching framework that the Board should look at the proposal based upon. I need to publicly thank a number of people who took the time to put together roughly a 29-page analysis of the Learn Charter Network proposal. First being our Board Attorney, Mr. Tom Horace, Ms. Gwen Holt, who did the financial analysis, Dr. Bricksy did the educational along with her staff. We had Eric Christensen, who's doing the organizational analysis, Mr. Doughty, transportation, Ms. Crudenta, Ms. Creed, leadership, Mr. Henningo Personnel, Mr. Newby, operations, Mr. Patterson, technology. All of those people put this analysis and spent a lot of their time and energy to put a thorough analysis together. The remainder of this program is going to be having each one of those individuals briefly go through their analysis of each of those components. We are going to start with financial, and that will be Ms. Gwen Holt. So, Ms. Holt?
Yes, first, I would like to say Happy New Year. And the first point that I wanted to address briefly is that the terms of the charter, as they were proposed, cannot be validated as fiscally viable for a number of reasons. One commonly used indicator used to assess fiscal viability is the year-end fund balance, also known as the change in net assets, as noted on your audited financial statement. According to your Statement of Activities for year ending June 30th, 2012, the year-end fund balance was negative, indicating a deficit for the fiscal year after other changes in the net assets were applied. Also, your current ratio fell below the commonly accepted threshold of 2.0. The current ratio is a measure of liquidity, okay? And we calculate that by taking your current assets and dividing that by your current liabilities. And that lets us know how well a school has the ability to meet its current obligations as they come due by indicating whether the organization has enough cash or other liquid resources to meet its obligations in the near term. Another major concern for us was the omission of the fiscal year 2013 audited financial statement. This raises a number of questions for us. Did the expenditures exceed the regulations even more so in FY13 than it did in FY12? Did the fund balance for the year decline even further? Is a negative trend developing? And even more important, from my perspective, is has an audited financial report even been completed? We all know that a failure to do this has huge financial implications, and it lends itself to substandard accounting and reporting practices. A second point that I wanted to talk about was the terms of the charter, as they were proposed. It did not present realistic evidence-based revenue and expenditure assumptions, including not having a plan to incur repaid debt. It appeared to me that you relied heavily upon historical revenue commitments as a means of estimating future funding of the school rather than providing evidence of all current or prospective business and our foundation partners' level of engagement. It was quite troubling to me that the application did not show a commitment from your parent organization for $500,000 in year zero, as it was noted on page three, line 36 of your budget narrative. But rather, in your application, it was referred to as an assumption. On page 61 of the same application, it was stated that the school board has fully approved the significant multi-year commitment to be used for startup and capital expenditures, but evidence of such commitment was not included in the application. We looked for something like board minutes or something to substantiate what you were saying. And also, the budget narrative of financial schedule, it failed to include contributions from the board beyond year zero. It's also important that I note that if a loan is needed, a debt repayment plan was not included in your application. Your proposed contract does not take into consideration the cost of services that the district is required to provide to students who attend your school, where such services are not provided by the charter school. For example, the district would be required to provide transportation to eligible students. The associated costs borne by the district to provide these services were not included in the per capita cost. The application did not include a food service plan, but instead stated that you could seek National School Lunch Program funding. Although you do not expect any monetary or material contributions from our district, it fails to address how you would pay for staff or any other costs that is not covered by the National School Lunch Program. What about breakfast? What about food service workers? What about food service equipment? None of this was addressed or explained in detail. In essence, the application failed to include a sufficient food service plan. It was also stated in your application that the district would be required to reimburse the charter school for salary and benefits for special education teachers and other related services, including OTPT, sites, and speech. The application fails to address who will bear the burden of providing other resources, including assistive technologies to special education students. Notably, costs associated with this presumption is not reflected in the budget narrative or on the financial schedule. Yet, these tremendous cost allocations have found their way into the proposed agreement as a district expense. Learn would be allocating more resources to the 600 students that would be attending the charter school on a per-pupil basis than the district would be allocating to the 16,000-plus students who are not admitted into the charter school. For instance, based on our calculations in FY16, the district's per capita, using what was provided to us, the $10,132, would be compared to what we calculated for 16 of $10,742, which is a difference of about 610. And throughout the next few years, your per capita cost is higher than what we would be paying in district. Equally as concerning is that the budget, as presented, has an approximately projected ending fund balance in 1415 of $24,000, including a $75,000 contingency. This is concerning because the proposed application does not include a capital improvement plan. There is a flat $750,000 allocation for initial outlay improvement in the budget for year zero. We cannot determine if this is sufficient since it is not uncommon for construction projections to have cost overruns due to unforeseen expenses, particularly whereas here, the construction projects involve remodeling and conversion of existing sites to current building codes and educational purposes. And the next, the terms of the charter, as proposed, are not economically sound for the district and will instead impose a financial hardship upon the district. At 100% per capita funding, the district would encounter a net revenue loss of approximately $22.7 million over a six-year period, using the information as presented in your proposal. It is not possible for the district to sustain such a large reduction in revenue without making major reductions in services. In order to pay for the charter, the district would add to its $49.6 million long-term debt, and the corresponding loss of revenues would only add to the difficulty and burden of us having to pay off this debt. Complicating matters even further is the fact that you did not agree to cap the annual increase in enrollment to the numbers specified in your application, although its financial projections are based upon that assumption. As such, we cannot properly plan an enrollment transition. If we were to look at the projected impact of the charter school allocation on our ending fund balance, looking throughout the years from year zero to 2020, we would allocate, as I mentioned before, the $22 million, which would leave the district at an ending fund balance based on our projections of about $5.5 million. And so, for that reason, I have major concerns in the financial area.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. I'd like to now introduce Dr. Joan Bricksy, who's going to review the educational analysis that was completed.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, much of what we are discussing are some of the same points that we made at the previous meeting, but we did take an end-up look, and so we want to address still some of the concerns that exist for us. We took a look at Learn's proposal, and we feel that it really fails to fully describe an educational program and curriculum that cover all the required subject areas, demonstrating alignment with the new Illinois learning standards, and particularly what are the specific performance standards that are required in each of the different content areas. We did not see that in any of the information in the proposal. We felt overall that the proposal tends to offer more of a philosophical approach rather than a coherent educational plan. Curriculum assessment, we feel, is not adequately addressed. Some statements in the proposal provide little specificity in the types of instruction, the types of materials, or the performance standards to be used. Student progress, as stated, is to be continually monitored. However, the proposal fails to describe what that means, what tools will be used, and what expected annual performance levels actually are. Again, referring to what I had mentioned earlier, setting a percentage of 19% of sixth-grade students at Learn North Chicago to meet or exceed on ISAT is not adhering to Learn's claim of providing a rigorous academic program. The second point is the curriculum described in the proposal is incomplete. Information regarding the curricula for technology, visual unperforming arts, Spanish, physical education is inadequate. Specific strategies for monitoring the implementation of the curriculum in all of these areas is not described. The reading resource identified, which is a research-based resource found at Sunco Nell, and we do use that in our district as well, guided reading, however, does not really align to the grade-level standards as presented because we have no explanation in the proposal as to what Learn plans to do to ensure that the grade-level standards are actually being taught and mastered if those students are performing below grade level. The third point, the proposal fails to describe a program to address the needs of the English-language learners, and that is the largest student population in our district. Learn and the proposal identify that those students that are eligible for ELL services will participate in either a transitional bilingual education or transitional program of instruction program, depending on the number of students enrolled that are in need of those particular programs. We do not see a specific curricula that is identified for English learners. The proposal on the budget from Learn does not clearly outline additional costs for classrooms and staff that may be required if classrooms are not completely filled through the watering with our English-language learner students. It also does not, the proposal does not describe how consistent sections of students for ELL services would be maintained. Costs, because Learn did indicate at the last meeting that they were looking at a dual-language program, which is one of the things we are doing in our district and that we are recommending. That we did not see the costs for programming needs if you move to a dual-language program. In proposed terms, what are you going to propose for curriculum? The materials, the professional development? We did not see the budget amount for that type of a program. Currently, our district is searching for qualified bilingual staff, and we do this every year, based on shortages. And Learn did indicate that they would train current and local staff for the ELL and bilingual certifications required by the state. However, costs for this coursework and for the licensure that is required were not listed in this proposal either. It is also unclear if Learn will attempt to house any of our 740 bilingual preschool students, as well as the additional cost incurred for a full-time kindergarten program to address our ELL learners. Access testing, even though Learn did mention that they also administer access as do we, it is not indicated how funding will be addressed as far as the testing cost, the student accommodation requirements, and proctor training costs to administer this assessment. It is plausible that a coordinator could handle the testing needs of ELLs or access in PARC, but that is not explained or outlined for us. The proposal lists two ELL specialists to guide instruction and training, but does not indicate if Learn will fund this or will attempt to add this to the ELL grants in the district. The district currently employs one specialist, and we utilize all of our funding available for this specific purpose. We also have to keep in mind that some of our ELL students also receive special education services. Other areas for clarification as far as our ELL population, what are the types of curriculum supplements that you will use for the new immigrants who are moving into our district? The assessment for students as they enter our district? The cost incurred for translation services? Bilingual secretary costs? Costs related to data management of students? Regarding the proposal for you to move toward a dual-language program, we also say that we need to have a plan that is clearly outlining what is your initial training for teachers implementing dual language in the upcoming year? What types of Spanish reading books and supplemental materials in Spanish in science and social studies will be provided? Typically, Spanish materials are typically needed more at the upper grade levels since transitional programs exit the program typically by third grade. Developing a dual-language library with Spanish reading books for your students? Library budgets, what are you going to do with that? Surveys for us indicate that more than half of district schools come from homes that are predominantly Spanish-speaking. About 35% of our Waukegan students come from homes where English is the preferred language. As a result of this diversity, an expansive and accommodating language program is necessary to avoid discriminatory practice and to make available sufficient translation services to support the students and all of our families in Waukegan. Number four, the proposal fails to articulate a program that addresses the needs of the special education students across the continuum. End of the proposal, we did not have a clear explanation of what occurs when a student requires additional services, except to say that those students will receive additional time in their self-contained resource room with a learning resource teacher. However, IDEA requires a full continuum of services for special education students. The proposal does not define alternate means of providing services should District 60 not agree to provide them. Procedures and policies intended to address the provision of special education are not included in the proposal. The proposal also fails to describe how behavioral intervention plans and transition need plans will be implemented, how needed supports will be provided to any severely disabled student who might enroll, and does not include any reference to Section 504 plans or reference to LEAP plans. The proposal does not indicate the intent to provide fed services to all students identified or the realization of the needs that students may demonstrate. No indication is provided as to how PARC, Dynamic Learning Maps, which is the new assessment in place of the alternative assessment, is being administered, how that is determined by the IEP teams, or how PARC, DLM accommodations and modifications will be made for students with disabilities whose IEPs require those accommodations or modifications. The proposal did indicate that the district will provide the charter school with personnel at our expense, or the charter school will hire personnel necessary at the district's expense. The charter school will also receive full reimbursement from the district of the cost of its fed teachers' full salarial benefits, and that the district will provide the charter school with any clinicians, paraprofessionals, or other personnel that the charter school determines are necessary by its students' IEPs. The proposal additionally does not describe how mandatory summer sessions for fed students with IEP requirements are for those who require additional support to receive or to achieve whether grade-level performance will be incorporated into Learn's school budget. They imply that these extended school year services will fall to the district at the district's expense. Number five, the student achievement recorded by Learn Charter School Network students is not significantly higher than district students. First of all, the proposal again fails to provide pupil performance standards to be achieved by the charter school. That's making it impossible to determine how students are promoted, how they are retained, how they move from one grade level to another. Fails to describe a coherent plan for corrective action for those low-performing students. Again, pupil performance standards are not provided for the various assessments that Learn says are administered on a regular basis. And I would also like to point out that nine of our 15 elementary schools are performing above the state average in reading, with one additional elementary and one middle school performing at the state average. 69.9% of Waukegan District 60 students are considered low-income, compared to Learn North Chicago, low-income percentage of 13.6%. Learn North Chicago, again, did not outperform Waukegan District 60 students in reading and math in the category of low-income overall and in grade six math in all the subgroups. Number six, the proposal contradicts the results described within the 2012 Five Essentials survey. And this, again, is one of those surveys that is required for districts for all the schools in the state to administer. And the research says that schools strong in three to five essentials, three of the five essentials were 10 times more likely to improve student learning substantially compared to schools weak in three of the five essentials. The 212 Five Essentials survey administered to Learn Charter School on the South Side of Chicago, again, reported very weak in five areas, weak in five areas, neutral in three areas, low response in nine different areas. And I would like, once again, to reiterate, as I said at the earlier meeting, that this is really contrary to me to what Learn described in your proposal that your charter school is all about. And we have had no response as to address the slow ratings and no answer was provided in support of the importance of the learning conditions and school climate and improving student academic achievement and in school improvement planning overall. Number seven, the proposal does not sufficiently address how technology is used to improve student acquisition of knowledge and skills. We did not find a technology curriculum outlined or described in the proposal. Classroom technology appears to us to only be used to support the online curriculum programs that are currently being provided by Learn. They seem to miss the promise of how technology can really help students to improve higher-order thinking, critical thinking skills, how they can learn research practices, and improve overall communication skills. Ultimately, our goal is to have all students using technology to support every aspect of their learning. There also does not appear to be a written professional development and plan in place regarding... regarding the use of technology. The PD program that we saw consists of helping teachers to manage the technology in their classroom. We saw no evidence that teachers are instructed in the use of technology as a tool to support all aspects of student learning, and no evidence of a structured professional development program that utilized national standards as a basis for developing the technology skills of your teachers.
Thank you, Dr. Brice. We will now have Mr. Eric Chrischun, who will outline our concerns regarding organizational plan.
An analysis of the organization plan in terms of the governing body. LEARN Charter Schools has a well-defined governing body with board of directors with well-qualified members interested in its success. At the public hearing, the staff presented, the staff presence indicated an interest in including local Waukegan residents, but no clear process was shared with how exactly that would work. No documentation was given for the adding and removal of board members. LEARN Charter Schools also indicated that they welcome parent and community comment and will have committees for discussion with staff. However, nothing was shared with how these committees would be formed and what committee authority they would have in making change at the charter school. Also, no clear plan was shared for how they would invite and encourage limited English-speaking parents to be part of the governing structure. In terms of staffing and human resources, LEARN Charter Schools show success in recruiting and hiring staff members of well-defined interview and training methods shared. Evaluation and due process procedures are not as well-defined as shared, which may indicate a shortfall. The 25 to 30% annual turnover rate for their staff is higher than that for Waukegan public In terms of professional development, LEARN Charter Schools shows intensive professional development prior to the start of the school year. They fail to show how the professional development continues through the school year and how teachers are given an opportunity to collaborate during the school day. Also lacking is documentation as to how staff are held accountable, the items learned through professional development to maintain the high professional standards in the country. In terms of student recruitment and enrollment, LEARN Charter Schools has a generic plan for recruiting students with flexible timeline to help the district meet its needs, including a lottery system for grade levels that have too many requests. Without an aggressive recruiting plan, many families in Waukegan may give up hope because they will be unaware of the opportunity until it is too late and selections have already been made. And finally, in terms of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, at the public hearing, LEARN Charter Schools stated that they would seek volunteers to assist with communicating with parents in languages other than English. 55% of the parents of Waukegan public school students prefer communication in a language other than English. An agreement that District 60 had to enter into with the Office of Civil Rights in 2012, expectations were set forth in regards to oral interpretation with parents in languages other than English for their basic civil right of understanding the educational needs of their children, including that interpreters and translators at schools are proficient in the language served by the district and are competent to provide interpretation and translation services. The district must also ensure that all translators have been appropriately trained regarding the role of interpreter and translator, the ethics of interpreting and translating, and the need to maintain confidentiality.
Thank you, Mr. Chrischun. Turn it over to Ms. Kim Morris, who's going to do a legal analysis of the agreement.
I'm going to digress, take the liberty of not exactly following the three presentations that just preceded me. When we started this, I think we were impressed with LEARN, it offered, it seemed to offer an exciting program. Staff was clearly motivated and very strong in their, in their support of the program. You have passionate members, passionate support from members of the community as well. And in fact, the whole thing was impressive in many respects. And I think the board, speaking for the board philosophically, has no bias. I know the administration had no bias coming into this. We were, we recognized that charter schools offer opportunities and diversity in educational programming, and might be terrific for these residents and families in Waukegan, at least in theory. So we all greeted this with a positive approach. So, you know, frankly, I didn't have any preconceived notion of how to look at this, and it was only in going through the details that I came to my conclusions, which I guess are summarized on the slide behind me. So I'll just highlight some of the key points. There's five pages, single-spaced, going through issues of variances and omissions and problems with the contract. You have to understand that I've been doing this for a long, long time, and almost all of my practice has one way or another centered around contracts. So when I sit down to go through the contract, I know, I'm sure you have very capable attorneys who drafted this agreement and it's probably been accepted by many other educational sponsoring entities, but I looked at it with a hard eye, because that's what I'm paid to do, to make sure that the district enters into a solid contract, and is it enforceable? Is the, is the contract internally consistent? And does it, in fact, protect the district's interests? Because we're going to be partners in this for a long period of time. Does it say what you mean, and does it, does it mean what it purports to say? And they all, that all has to come together, and I found the contract wanting. I won't go through that. You'll be given the legal analysis, you'll be able to review it. I want to say as well that we're all victims of timelines. We are, there are lots of things in contract negotiations that could be solved by lawyers sitting down and talking together, or parties sitting together and talking together. There would be a lot less misunderstanding, we wouldn't have to be struggling with assumptions or apparent absences or voids in document, because we haven't really communicated. But we're struggling with winter break and, and, you know, we, we, we've got a deadline to get this filed, one way or the other. So we have to work with the document as presented. It may not, it may be something that we'll all readily agree is correctable, but that's, has to occur sometime after this date. This may be solvable, it may be amendable. I don't, I don't know where this ends, but as of right now, the board has to take action on the contract document that's presented. And there's ample opportunity or adequate opportunity for us to look at further clarification of perceived deficiencies. So that conversation could yet occur, or it may cause an amendment or reapplication. I don't want to say never, but right now, I have to say no to this agreement. The problem is, in short, without going through tediously each and every problem, is that I felt that there were, the proposal was very thorough, and then it was all incorporated by reference into the agreement. And unfortunately, that inherently creates some difficulty in enforcing a legal commitment, because somebody will want to go back and say, "Show me exactly where it says that they will do thus and so." And I felt that the key commitments and key aspects of this had to be expressly stated and more clearly, because there were some inconsistencies in the agreement and some variances from existing law. I felt that the agreement suffered, did not address the fact that there were literally dozens of revisions in the charter school law that were effective after probably the contract was originally created down in Chicago. And there are, all these changes are effective in law before this agreement proposes to go into effect. And these omissions were material to me and flawed the contract. There were certain parts that were just not addressed, certain requirements in the statute that were omitted and not addressed in the contract, either by reference or by express statement. The, the, the contract had some serious problems in terms of inconsistencies between the presentation. For example, as I read it, as I heard you say that you would always use certified teachers, and yet your agreement allows you to not use certified teachers. So are you bound by your agreement? Are you bound by your contract? Are you bound by your verbal representations to the board? Ultimately, we'll have to go back to the contract, and if you've left the door open to something that you didn't really want, was a nice-to-have thing, well, the contract should have conformed to what you really wanted, or what you were really asking us to enforce. There should be more sharing of data, more clarity with respect to reporting. These are allowed by law, but weren't incorporated in your agreement. And if, as an overarching comment, I guess I would say that we all speak about partnership and working together, but the agreement really seemed to enforce the autonomy of, of LEARN. And it's the fact that, once it was here, it was here to stay, and it pretty much should be left alone to manage the program the way it wanted. And I think if I had been involved in negotiating this, I think we all would have worked for more of a clearer expression or confirmation that the obligations that we expect you to do would be subject for regular reporting and cooperation, and a lack of cooperation might be a basis for adverse action. The whole problem of the contract in terms of, in, in other respects, have been alluded to by other speakers, but there were gaps that were critical in, in the transportation area and special education and LEP in particular. Once we went through that OCR investigation and made commitments, there are ongoing commitments, we have to be able to assure the Office of Civil Rights that our limited English proficient families who, who form a significant part of the Waukegan community will have the full opportunity to participate. And, and I just don't, did not get any sense in the contract or the proposal that the magnitude of that problem was fully appreciated. So there was a certain amount of imprecision in terms of, or inconsistencies in the financial operation and obligation, language and treatment in the contract. And anytime there's imprecision, it creates problems, legal problems, and problems in monitoring, problems in enforcement, problems in oversight. And these were not unresolvable problems, they were not fatal flaws in the sense that they could never be cured, but they're fatal flaws today when we take action on the contract as presented. And for that reason, I concluded that the agreement was legally deficient.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. At this point, we want to just remind the Board of Education about the recommendation and next steps. First, the Board of Education will render its decision to approve or deny the charter school application tonight. Within 10 days, the decision of the Board of Education required documents, including our detailed analysis and the public postings and the application itself, need to be submitted to the Board, the former Board of State Board of Education. Depending upon the outcome, LEARN Charter School representatives may appeal the Board of Education decision dated this week, seek to negotiate a agreement with the Board of Education, or accept the decision of the Board of Education. So at this moment, I may turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. DeMolino Tieste.
Thank you, Dr. Mankey, and members of the administration, as well as to those of you who are seated here in our audience tonight. As Mr. Morris has indicated, that we welcome the opportunity to review the application as submitted by the LEARN Charter School to do business hearing about Waukegan Public Schools. And certainly, in conformity with the expectations in my role as the Superintendent and my administrative task, to support me in the review of this application, it is contingent upon all of our working together to ensure that the best possible opportunities for our students will pass muster and make it a sound recommendation to the Board of Education upon which to act. In regards to the formal proposals submitted by the LEARN Charter School Network, the district has summarized the concerns, as you have heard this evening. As was fully discussed in the body of the analysis, the legal review of the LEARN proposal identified several problems. Details and program requirements specified by recent legislative provisions to the Charter School section of the school code were omitted, causing the application to be noncompliant with applicable law. In some respects, the proposed charter agreement varied from the applicant's oral description of his programs, i.e. allowing the employment of uncertified teaching staff, thereby creating ambiguity and uncertainty about key elements of the charter. The language of the proposed charter was also imprecise and confusing regarding major financial aspects, including the calculation of funding formulas and timing, refunds and reporting. The absence of regular review, renegotiation opportunities precludes the mitigation of negative financial impacts on the district, particularly in transportation and special education areas during the terms of the charter. Given federal nondiscrimination laws and regulations, there is a substantial concern that the charter school program has devoted insufficient attention and resources to the challenges of communicating with the district's limited English proficient families and the ELL educational requirements and staffing costs. The charter agreement as proposed is virtually impossible to terminate regardless of the quality, performance, or operational failures by LEARN, since the cure periods are so prolonged and the legal evidentiary standard is so high. Consequently, the agreement as proposed is legally unsound from the standpoint of the district. After a thorough and exhaustive review of the application and listening to the responses and the questions, it is the recommendation of the administration that the recommendation is to deny the application as presented.
If I may add this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
No motion.
Ms. Torres, motion.
Motion. And do I have a second?
A second.
Motion by Ms. Torres, second by Ms. LeBlair, that the recommendation to deny the application for the LEARN Charter School. Do you deny? Are they going to come?
We have prepared a resolution summarizing the protocol.
We have prepared a resolution that, of course, we're not sure how you're going to vote, but in anticipation of the recommendation by the administration, we prepared a resolution, which I handed out to you. It's two pages long, it'll take a little bit of time to read it, but we need that resolution as part of our record of the proceedings that we, that were taken here, so that it's clear if they take an appeal, what, what your action was and what they'll be appealing as they move forward. So with, with, in the hope that Ms. Torres would, the motion is essentially to adopt the resolution, I'd really request that someone read it. I'll take turns, or I'll find water for whoever wants to read it.
I'll better find some water.
I'll start. I'll start reading. Resolution concerning application of LEARN Charter School. Where is the Longdale Educational and Regional Network Charter School, Inc.? An Illinois nonprofit corporation, LEARN, submitted a proposal dated November 14, 2014, for a charter school agreement with the Board of Education of Waukegan. fourteen, for a charter school agreement with the Board of Education of Waukegan Community Unit School District Number Sixty, District, on or about November seventeenth, twenty fourteen, pursuant to the provisions of the one oh five, the Illinois compiled statutes five, twenty seven, eight dash one, and following, the charter school law, and whereas representatives of Learn and the district have met informally to discuss the application, and the Board of Education received additional information from the applicant, community members, and interested persons at a public meeting held on December tenth, twenty fourteen, and whereas the district's administrators conducted an analysis of the materials provided and formulated a recommendation to the board, which was presented at this evening's meeting, and whereas the board has evaluated the Learn application and the proposed charter school agreement and has considered the administrative recommendations and other information provided at the December tenth, twenty fourteen, public meeting and presentation, and the board, having debated the question, deliberated concerning the application's conformance with the requirements of the charter school's law, and weighed the best interest of the district, finds and determines as follows. One, Learn's application supporting materials and the lack of community attendance at the public meeting failed to demonstrate a high or sufficient level of local support in accordance with one oh five I L C S five, two seven, eight, eight, one. Although the board recognizes that some parental support exists, it is not at a high level and an absence of local community and business financial commitment is noted. The application as presented will cause grievous financial harm to the district and will force a shift of scarce financial resources to the detriment of those students who are unable to attend the Learn Charter School. As proposed, the charter application is not financially neutral. To the contrary, it is detrimental to the district.
Number two, an analysis of the educational program proposed by Learn has disclosed serious flaws and gaps in the application. Particularly concerning are the shift of transportation and special education service obligations, the lack of thoughtful plans to address the needs of the district's bilingual and limited English proficient families and students, weaknesses in the proposed technology curriculum, the lack of sufficient achievement at North Chicago in comparison to comparative district schools, and lingering questions about climate and culture in Learn's schools. Although Learn's aspirational goals are lofty and commendable, the application fails to put forth an educational program and curriculum that is sufficiently deep, broad, and aligned with required standards. In sum, the application fail, falls short of demonstrating a feasible plan for attaining the stated achieving goals as required by one oh five I L C S five slash twenty four, eight, dash eight, parentheses, two.
Twenty seven, eight.
Twenty seven, eight.
Twenty seven.
Oh, twenty seven, eight, slash eight, parentheses, two.
Okay, number three, given the demographics of the district and the size of the proposed CIRPS area, the organizational plan submitted by Learn lacked sufficient attention to the challenge of equitably engaging the entire community and its students in a nondiscriminatory fashion. Insufficient attention was given to the challenges and the expenses associated was properly communicated with the significant LEP's, LEP population and the, and ensuring that all students and families in the district can fully participate in the educational program, program being proposed. As well, there was a lack of attention getting lost there. There was a lack of attention to the complications and cost of the special education program services requirements, particularly over an extended school day in a year. Learn's application did not demonstrate its full appreciation for the challenges of the district's diversity, that its program is designed to enroll and service a substantial proportion of average children, or that it is prepared to execute a nondiscriminatory admissions and communications program in accordance with the expectations of one oh five I L C S five, dash twenty seven, eight, dash eight, parentheses, three, and applicable federal law.
As more fully discussed in the administrative recommendation, there are apparent omissions and deviations from existing law in the proposed agreement form and other legal concerns, particularly about the proposed content in financial reporting and termination sections. That caused the appropriate agreement to be unacceptable without additional negotiations for those, for the foregoing reasons and those more fully set forth in the administrative summary and recommendations, which are incorporated herein by reference and may part thereof, hereof. It is hereby resolved that the Learn application and proposed charter agreement as presented be denied. I so move.
It's been moved by Ms. Torres and seconded by Ms. McGuire. Are there any discussion? Any comments? Any comments?
Yes, Ms. Hannah, thank you very much. And I, I echo Mr. Morrison's comments earlier. You know, our board was, really took this most seriously. But due to the, the recommendation of the concerns that our administration, you know, across the board has in the application, I would certainly urge the Learn Charter School system to work with us on that. Nobody is opposed to the idea of having a choice. Nobody has said that. I want to make that very clear. But this is serious business. It's about doing what is best for the students, parents, taxpayers, staff, Waukegan, and we are fully committed to that. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I came here this evening ready to vote for Learn, and I am still ready to vote for Learn. I think that this is, I am, I'm looking forward to having a charter school in Waukegan, and I think that this is a great program for our community, for our students. I believe that the application and the contract are flawed, but there are things that I think can be fixed. If we work together, I think there are things that can be fixed so that we can get this program, this charter school, in Waukegan. So that is my, those are my comments for Ms. Torres.
But Ms. Pearson, like, our kids need it. They need to be challenged, and, and this is great. But like, there is flaws, and we have to fix them because our first priority is our students, our children. Believe me, I got three here. So let's fix it and let's do it.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Can I just ask for clarification, since the motion was stated, because it's a little bit confusing. The motion that you made, Ms. Torres, was to support the administration's recommendation?
As of right now, yes, because there are flaws in it, and we do need them fixed before we can...
I just want to make sure that the motion is clearly stated and clearly understood.
Yes. That as of right now, we are going to support that, you know, this is okay. The administration's recommendation.
And the resolution.
And the resolution. That's great.
So as I understand the motion, it is to deny the request to support the administrative recommendation, which was incorporated by reference, and to approve the resolution as referenced. So vote yes if you, or I if you disapprove the application to support the recommendation. Is that clear? Yes. If you're against the resolution, you would vote no.
Hey, roll call.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Pearson, one?
Nay.
I'm sorry?
Nay.
Thank you. Ms. McGuire?
Yes.
Mr. Redd, read this.
Of course.
Ms. Torres?
I want him to come over and do it again. So say nay.
Mr. Elliot?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes. Motion passed. Motion and the resolution. All right, the next, we have other items on the agenda.
And we would like to also let the record reflect that a copy of the detailed analysis will be shared with the Learn Charter Network of Schools within the ten-day allow period. So they will be getting a complete copy of this.